I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. Stand to the plate.
Like we used to do, flag of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you hear me, Father? We come before you this evening. We thank you, Father God, for this day. This is a day that you have made. And we choose right now to rejoice and be glad in it. We thank you that you set this board in this town. We thank you for this town. And we thank you, Father God, that you've let us come together in unison and in calmness and sweetness of spirit to be able to make decisions about this town, Father God. And we thank you that you have, richly in your best interest and that you've given that obligation to us and that you help us make all decisions, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I'd like to welcome all the visitors tonight to our meeting. Roll call.
Ruth.
Here.
Steve.
Here.
Michael.
Here.
Denise.
Here.
Renee.
Here.
Here.
Approved minutes of the April meeting.
Much more to approve.
I second it.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Denise.
Yes.
Approve April financial records and best updates.
Actually, May.
Oh, I'm sorry. I haven't heard from you in a month or two.
I did want to add two things to this. And I would like to take a separate vote on both of these just because of what it entails. On our bank reconciliations, general fund, payroll, water are the three main ones that have several checks outstanding that are over two years old. That, they're well before me. Like, I've inherited these and I have to keep track of them every month. The Alderman's recommended that y'all vote to let me clear anything older than two years old off the books, so that we don't have to account for those every month. And the other is the accounts receivable on the water. We can't collect anything that's older than seven years. And she also recommended that we start anything five years and older, that we start writing those off the books. But both of those things have to be approved by y'all.
Well, I make a motion to go with what the Alderman said, unless there's discussion that needs to be about it.
Beth, what are we talking about? How much are we talking about?
We could possibly tagle it. And I don't have specific numbers because...
About.
Probably on the checks, it's, one of them is like $2,300. Payroll is a couple hundred dollars. Like, it's not much, it's just stuff that...
They're saying they're checks that have not come through?
Yes.
You wrote the check, or somebody wrote the check.
Somebody wrote the check and all these months. And they may have cleared and that person might have missed it. You don't know. I'm sure it might have been lost in the mail and the check was rewritten.
But does our checks say at the bottom, not valid after 90 days or anything like that?
A lot of payroll checks.
I know our fire checks do.
They say after so many days?
90 days.
Okay. So, we can start adjusting all that stuff off. That way, it's cleaner when you're doing your bank reconciliation. You don't have to go through so much to get them done. Which, we're getting them done in a total of about 10 hours now, where it was taking a week and a half. So, we're getting that streamlined. But it's just, I just have to have approval. Like, it's, on the water, that total number is going to be different because we're going to start the software conversion on the 23rd of June. City Hall will be closed that day because we cannot use the system at all. But we're going to work that day. And we'll be, we're going to have a cleaning day. We're going to start cleaning out records that are more than 10 years old, that stuff we can get rid of. And schedule shredded to come and get rid of all that and clean everything up where it's organized as it is. Now, it will be even more. But at that time, I'll have somebody that will be working with me on the accounts receivable. And we can go through as we're moving stuff to the new system and shave off that stuff that's so old that we're not going to collect. If it's five years old, we're not going to collect it.
Right.
But anything younger than that, we can, the city attorney has given me information on doing a collection agency and start trying to collect some of those older bills.
Do we have a lot of them, Beth?
It's not a whole lot. It's just, it's not been maintained well for the past few years. So, it's kind of built up to be a bigger number than what... It's stuff that should have, this stuff is stuff that should have already been gone off your books. It's just kind of been carried over. And she said, now that you're kind of getting hang of what you're doing, and so I would like to work with you on getting that streamlined and getting that down where it needs to be. But I can get better figures for you. I just have to...
I was just wondering.
Start the process.
Just wondering.
Will I make the motion?
I second.
Motion by Renee, seconded by Mr. Nice. Roll call.
Ruth.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Trey.
Yes.
Approved bills to be paid.
Okay, we got to do the, I think, first financial report. We still got to approve the reports separately.
The report's the thick one, right?
Yes.
Okay. I know it's just something that we have to pay. Like, this unemployment insurance on the very first page. We're like, how did we wind up 60, I mean, being over 1,000%?
The percentage on it?
Yeah.
Last year, when the budget was done, I mean, I really had no clue what I was doing and that came from impasse. And that was, like, I've watched it over the year. And if you look at the new budget, there's, I've put more funds and they're covering, it's not a big amount, but it looks bad when you look at the big percentage.
Right, okay.
So...
So, there may be more than one of those on this, maybe?
It's going to be each, like, we pay salaries out of the general fund, we pay out of water. Donnie is paid half out of solid waste, Eric paid out of street. So, each of those is going to have an unemployment. The police department will have a line. So, each of those are going to look inflated. And like I said, it's not a whole lot of money.
Well, a little bit inflated is one thing, but 1,000%?
Look at 1,000%, but it's only a few hundred dollars. It still looks bad. So, we have adjusted those numbers where it will be more aligned with what we actually are going to use on that.
Okay. Come on, I'll make my motion to approve.
Motion by Renee.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Nice. Roll call.
Ruth.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Trey.
Yes.
That took care of the financial reports, right?
Yes, sir.
Approved bills to be paid.
I did lay in the deed of them to the bills to be paid there. I got some bills in from Lake County Bankers. The big one is where we have to run the annual water quality report. And then there's a smaller one where we run the meeting time and all of that.
And I know you probably said this before, but just refresh my memory. What is Twin Oaks and some of these categories?
Twin Oaks is, and this may actually be something that we're looking at getting away from, but they are a computer IT place. There was an issue with some stuff that they put on one of the computers that local government didn't like. So, I'm hoping, because we're getting new computers and everything, that when those new computers come in, we can handle all of our, that was started before me, using them. We can either handle all of our IT through local government, where we don't have to use them. We can stop that because we pay monthly fee and then every time we make a phone call, there's a charge. So, I'd like to be away from that if we can, if local government can handle all the IT.
Where's, where are the computers coming from?
They're coming from local government.
Yeah, well, that all, that all, you know, wherever they come from, I need to support them. And I see where, you don't need a third party.
Exactly.
Especially, you know, during a maintenance contract, which I'm sure you're going to provide. Okay, all right.
And I do have a copy of that contract that, I've got that on the bills to be approved, I believe. And I've got that contract here if anybody wants to look at it. But I didn't make copies of it for you, I'm sorry. But it lists all the different charges that are associated with each piece of equipment that we're having, that we're getting and the different softwares, what they're installing and all of that.
So, that's 23rd of this month?
Yes. We'll be, we will be open that Friday before, but we won't be able to process payments or do anything in the system. But we're going to be open that day. We will be closed on Monday. And that's the day the actual commercial will take place.
Hey, it's happening.
It's happening.
So, it's happening.
I told y'all, I just had to get comfortable. Because it was a lot to take on a new software and a new job and a new employee. We're ready to, we're ready to go and we're excited for it.
Good deal.
I think between that and if the water meters ever come fruition, it'd be sweet for the city. You know, I think it'd be a big asset.
Right.
Step into the future.
We have a motion to approve the bills. Let's see.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
Motion by Steve.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Renee.
Ruth.
Yes, ma'am.
Michael.
Yes.
Denise.
Yes.
Trey.
Yes.
Old business, garbage rate ordinance. It's been a second reading.
We don't have to reread the ordinance. We just have to take another vote on it. But I'll remind y'all that it's, the fees will be going up to $22.50 per customer. And that will also include the housing authority. I talked to them. They were still paying less than residents for a garbage can. I'm assuming when the rates were raised last, they didn't go in, you have to go in and do that separately. Spoke to them and told them they were paying $26 in landfill fees. It should be 100 because they have 100 apartments. So, that's going up. Their rate is going up to $22.50 per apartment, which will be the same as everybody else. And then any dumpsters or anything like that that we have on our contract, it will increase the same percentage.
I have a motion.
What is it now?
21.
21.
Oh, yeah, I make a motion.
Motion by Renee. I'll second. Seconded by Michael. Roll call.
Ruth.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve.
Yes.
Denise.
Yes.
Trey.
Just for, we need to re spell Richly.
Spell what?
Richly.
I can do that. Thank God, I know as much as I like.
Vicious dog ordinance. You got a big second reading on that, isn't it?
It is the second reading on that as well. We will not be reading it, but it does have provisions in there for the vicious dog can be any breed of dog. It doesn't necessarily mean traditionally...
I agree.
Breed. And it also has the guidelines in there for the permit fee. Anybody that does have those traditional breeds, rottweilers, German Shepherd, pitts, silvermen, they have to come to City Hall, get a permit, provide proof of insurance and shelter and the dogs had its shots and all of that.
So, if we were to see somebody with these dogs, we ask them, have they been to the city to make a...
I don't know that you ask everybody that to pick it. I think it's more along the lines of if she has...
If she has to pick it up?
If she has an issue with one, she can ask them then.
Okay.
Have you registered the dog? And then they can be cited into court and made follow, go through that practice.
We had one today that we had an issue with. And we told them that we are assuming the new ordinance. So, I will swing by once we get it all done and bring them a copy of it to bring to City Hall to register their dog. And they were fine with that.
Have we put that on the Richly citizens' website?
We have not yet because it has not passed. But as soon as it's passed, I'm going to, I'm going to put that on there. And the garbage rates, tomorrow I'll go in and make sure that all that stuff is posted.
Should we put it in the paper too, or no?
Um...
Probably wouldn't hurt.
Probably would hurt.
We have so many people that don't do one or the other.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't you just register every dog? Yeah, you don't need the insurance for a dog. But why not just register every dog? And then if they find the dog, she now has a record and can look at pictures and go, oh, we know that one. And that'd be, yes, ma'am.
My dog can't even walk, so I don't feel like I should have to register. She's a 10-pound chihuahua that's just in the...
What about vicious tomcats?
I think it's just trying to make everybody conform is the problem. So, we're just not doing anything until they're, it's a problem. To let it is a problem, when they pick them up, then we'll start there.
I register my card, I ain't hitting nobody with it.
Well, I'm saying, I'm saying.
There is, there is technically a rabies vaccination law that they do, when you go get your dog's rabies shots, they do register the dog at that point. We just don't have access to those, do we? So, that would be, they are registered with the state, but we would only register just the vicious dogs.
And the thing about proving the insurance, you know, if they haven't told the insurance carrier that they had that, I mean, because they wouldn't issue, they wouldn't issue the contract.
Right.
So, you know, that doesn't mean that they told them that they have a rottweiler or whatever, you know?
I bet they listed on their insurance.
It's going to be in your homeowner?
It should be through your homeowner.
Yeah.
We have a motion for the second reading of the ordinance.
I make a motion to approve the vicious dog ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Nice.
I second it.
Seconded by Renee. Roll call.
Ruth.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Trey.
Yes.
Athletic insurance.
I'll let Denise pop on that.
Yeah, I've been looking over all the different contracts. There is a lot to select from. And I'm just going to recommend that you prioritize, because I think it's like six or seven different options of life, disability, just, you know, accident. I would prioritize what you guys think is the most important. I happen to think that disability is really important. But think about the premiums. And then next year, you can go up. You can add something else if you want to. You know what I'm saying? But it is, it's a really good plan. Their plans are really good. And they're portable, which is important. You have it too, yeah. But just, don't try to over-budget yourself. That makes sense.
Well, you don't know how much disability is worth until you can't go to work tomorrow.
That's right. Been there, done that.
So, we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve offering at their cost. You know, not us contributing, right?
Right.
So, I make a motion to offer the employees the athletic insurance.
And the reason it's set up that way is if they leave the city, they can continue cooperation and still, they can send the premiums and the sales.
And the premiums don't change.
Right.
I'll second. Seconded by Michael.
Ruth.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve.
I don't want to know more about it.
Well, all you're doing is offering it.
You're just offering. We're not paying.
We're not paying.
Okay, uh, yes.
Then I, Trey.
Yes.
She will just handle the money transaction. All right. New business. We're going to have a, we're going to make a little change here. We're going to move number three up to first. Let Mr. Tim Joyce with TCRS talk, or he doesn't have to stay for the whole meeting.
Before I get started, let me back up a little bit. The subject of disabilities come up. If y'all were to adopt TCRS, and I'm going to drill down into the specifics of that, TCRS is not just a retirement program. It's also a disability program. And it also has some additional death benefits. It's not life insurance and it's not insurance against disability. It's actually a disability program where if you qualify for social security disability, you can theoretically draw your TCRS as a disability benefit, regardless of your age. So, disability is a big thing. It's very important. So, I just wanted to offer that before we get started, since the Lord just talked about that. And in addition to that, if I don't get it out now, I might forget later. So, it doesn't always, all my...
I feel your pain.
Yes, sir. I'm right there. Anyway, TCRS, Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, is a retirement program that is covered by the State of Tennessee for all State of Tennessee employees. I'm a state employee. I'm covered by TCRS. And of course, I'm a salary. If y'all chose to participate, I don't get a nickel. I'm just a state employee. I'm not selling anything. I'm just trying to let you know that this is a State of Tennessee's program that is also available to local governments. And when I heard that Richly was interested in looking at retirement, there's only a few places in West Tennessee in my region that does not have TCRS. And Richly's one of them. And there's several others. And that's fine. That's, it's all right. Retirement benefits can, can be expensive, right? And so, what's important about discussing retirement is the employment world is becoming more and more complicated. It's very competitive. I see we have police officers here and you probably have public works people. And you also have a city recorder. In order to, at some point in time, we all graduate, we all retire, recruiting additional employees becomes more and more difficult. Retirement is a way to help solve that problem. And I'm sure, and I'm not trying to pick on your recorder here, but finding a recorder, finding, filling a position of a recorder without TCRS is going to be very difficult. Not impossible, but difficult because the recorders themselves, they know who's got TCRS and who doesn't. So, having a retirement program is important. So, TCRS is a benefit. It's a bucket of money that you draw as a benefit monthly. No matter how old you are, when you pass away, you will draw your benefit, very much like social security. The benefit's based on how many years you work, your salary, and your age. So, there's an age component about when you become eligible to retire. So, we put all that together and in a magic formula, outcomes in number, and that's how much you get every month for the rest of your life. Now, I think currently you have like a 457 that you're making matching contributions in, right? So, a 457, we also have a 457 with the state as well as a 401K. But that's a bucket of money that if you spend it all, it's gone. TCRS is a bucket of money that you will draw every month for the rest of your life. Even if you're 110 years old, you will continue to draw it, like social security, just like social security. So, the two buckets are entirely different type of buckets, right? Now, having both is good. But TCRS is a different type of bucket. It's something that's to provide you sustaining income throughout your lifetime when you become eligible to retire. Okay? Important concept. So, in this environment that we're talking about, we're looking at a potential shift from a bucket that you can spend all your money to a bucket you'll get every month for the rest of your life, which obviously has its advantages. So, in thinking about this, and again, I'm going to drill that into how this works a little bit more. But in thinking about this, what I think is good to think about is you've got employees who may want to stay in the 457 and that's perfectly fine. But you can also transfer those who want to come into the TCRS and end the match to help pay for TCRS. What's your current match?
3%.
3%? Good. The cost of the most affordable plan, and I'm really thinking that the hybrid plan, what we call the hybrid plan, which is the same plan that anybody that's hired today with the State of Tennessee falls into the hybrid plan. It's the most affordable plan. The rate for the hybrid plan is 2.3%. So, if you change from a 3% match to a 2.3%, I mean, you're really not saving a lot of money, but you're still saving money. So, what you're able to do is transfer for those who are interested, going from the bucket of money that they can spend and it's gone, to a bucket of money that is more sustainable for their lifetime once they become eligible. So, I think it's important to get that concept of how these differ and the current situation that you're in with the town. Because for me, at my age, yeah, I'd like to have a bucket that's got a million dollars in it. But I also realize that getting paid every month for the rest of my life and then having the ability for a spouse to draw after me is very important. Whatever you get, social security is yours. Whatever you get, TCRS is yours. It comes together, so there's no interference with that. So, there are certainly some distinct advantages. Again, I'm not trying to sell you. I'm just trying to show you what the advantages are. Now, the specifics of the TCRS plan. It takes five years to get vested. So, if you started today, your employees, unless you were to go backwards and buy prior service, which you could in the future, but we're not talking about that tonight. But you could go back and buy that time, but it's still going to take five years to get vested. Once you're vested, you're guaranteed a benefit every month for the rest of your life when you become eligible. So, there's the five-year vesting. And then in this plan, employers, and we're talking about the resolution we have before you is for the hybrid plan, which is the 2.3% that the town will pay and substituting theoretically the 3% into the match. They keep their money that they've already got in their 457, but the city would begin paying in a TCRS for those who choose to participate, 2.3%. But the employees themselves would be paying 5%. So, the employees have a portion that they pay, which is important. You want buy-in that keeps people on the job. If they've got 10 years invested, they've got 10 years of their money, that means, hey, I need to hang around until I hit...
Five years.
Whatever timeframe or whatever their long-term retirement plan is, because it only enhances their benefit, right? So, if y'all were to adopt tonight, all your current employees would have the option to participate. We're not going to force anybody who's already working. We're not going to force Mr. Tubbs here to participate if he doesn't want to. If he wants to, great. If he doesn't, that's fine, no problem. If he wants to, great, if he doesn't, that's fine, no problem. He can stay doing what he's doing, and that's, that's fine. But any new employee is required to participate. So, if you adopted tonight, I'm just talking here, if you adopted tonight, if you hired somebody tomorrow, they would have to go into TCRS. Anybody, existing employee has the option. Now, an employee could say, no, I don't wanna do it, and that's fine. They stay where they're at, they wanna do this, that's cool, no problem. But if they change their mind six months from now and say, hey, I wanna end, they can come in. What they can't do is say, I want in, oh, six months later, I don't wanna be anymore. No, you're in, you're in, you're in, yes.
What if they quit?
So, if they quit, they would be terminating their employment and therefore their participation with TCRS. Now, if they quit and go to the prison, they would pay you back with TCRS.
But what I'm saying, if they quit, can they draw what they paid in out?
Yes. So, anytime somebody, and this, that's a great point, uh, I'm gonna call you mayor because you're a former mayor. But, you know, once you're elected, they'll position your, I'm a former state representative, so I, people don't always call me representative. So, it's, that's fine, I don't wanna, I'm gonna get into that, but anyway, I'm picking on the mayor here because we've met before, but.
We know each other.
Yeah. But the point is that if somebody stays here three years and moves to California and is never coming back, they can refund that 5% that they put in plus interest on that money. They can draw it out. Now, let, they're, they're not vested, and that's fine, but they're foregoing any benefit in the future, because if they were to come back and then work someplace two more years, they're really starting over. So, uh, yes, for those who participate that decide to refund, you can refund your money plus interest. They do not get any of the city's money. That stays in the account and therefore helps balance your rate over time. So, uh, TCRS is a benefit that, uh, it's a fixed payment structure. The eligibility is based on, on the rule of 90, which is really age 65. We're all working more anyway. I'm already, so I'm in legacy, which for the subjects of this discussion, my eligibility is age 60. Well, I'm already 60, I'm older than 60, but I'm working longer anyway. I gotta get to 65, Medicaid, Medicare, social security is available at 62, but why take the reduction? But I'm really working for insurance.
What about?
I'm sorry.
What about the, like, we got an officer, of course, toes as well, that's been in it?
Yes.
But they come to work here and we're not offering, does that pick back up?
Absolutely, they add to their service.
So, they don't have to wait, like, a waiting period, though? Okay.
And you, and the 5%?
I'm, I'm sorry, let me back up. Now, if they're drawing their benefit, there might be some things that we could talk about with them, about how, if they're working full-time, and there are some things about being retired, uh, but going back to work full-time, we'd have to kind of figure something out.
Well, I mean, I think this officer had been participating in it, and of course, came to work here, we didn't offer it, so he was, you know.
So, they would simply be adding more time on top of what they've already got.
Now.
I'm sorry, mayor.
Um, so.
The 5%.
Any employee that chooses to participate, they have to put in, they have to, it's mandated, 5%.
Well, so, you could adopt the hybrid plan to pay that 5% for them, you could do that. But I wanted to come in with the most affordable version that's close to that 3, 2 and 1/2, 2.3% match, because if you pay that 5% for them, you, you are paying more money than you weren't paying. So, that's why we structured it the way it is. But you could certainly change the formula of, of what you're paying to include that 5%. So theoretically, if you adopted tonight under this plan, you could consider six months from now, a year from now, and you could actually pay that 5% for them. You could do that, you can make changes to that structure. But you can't back up from that, so if you decided to pay all 5.0 plus 2.3 is 7.3%. If you decided to do all that for all your employees and change your mind on that, you can only change your mind on the next employee coming in, because you made a decision that would negatively impact. In other words, forcing an employee to pay more, you have to start with that next employee that's hired, because you can't detrimentally impact a person for this.
What about the investment? I mean, what do they invest in? Is it risk, are there, all their money's guaranteed?
There is no investment options with this. We at Treasury actually do the investing, and our return, we, we're one of the superior, well-known plans out there. We've got an extremely good reputation. We do all investing, I call them the Corderoy penny local crowd in Nashville. We've got our own investment team, and, and they are really sharp, and they're well compensated. They're New York investment types, but we invest the money ourselves. Yes, sir, mayor, you have another question?
When the employee retires, the city no longer has to pay anything on that employee, right?
Well, not directly, but that person is within that pool, and I'm not an investment-type person, but when you've got a, it's like insurance, when you got a person in that pool that is drawing a benefit, they're still calculated in that, uh, uh, pool of employees. So, if you had a sudden number of employees retire, if you were a larger employer like City Jackson, and you had a suddenly large number of people retiring, yes, they're drawing the benefit, they're no longer payroll-paying, true, but that pool could impact the rate, bu- because market types of investment thing. So, I don't wanna say, no, the employer doesn't have any more responsibility. It's, it's a lesser level of responsibility, but it could theoretically impact the rate in general. This is a general broad study.
So, it could wind up in, in long run, the city could be paying on 50 or 60 employees at the end, am I right?
Right, but keep in mind, we are required by IRS to actuarially maintain the program that the fee structure, uh, the fee structure pays for the benefit, right? But what we can't predict always is market performance. So, sometimes when the market is bad, we, we might have pressure to creep the rates up. But the, the thing about Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System is we don't do across-the-board rate increases. We would manage Ridgely separately, City Jackson separately, State of Tennessee Teachers, big pool, separately. And that's why, uh, it's, so, so some places, and I'll give you a great example, it's a good question, mayor. There's a benefit out there that we're not suggesting y'all look at, but it's called, uh, the bridge. It's an enhanced benefit for law enforcement people. Well, it's an enhanced benefit, and what that means is that the person pays, gets a higher, more money in the benefit. We are seeing some creepage in the rates because of that benefit component in that. So, places that have what's called the bridge, it's a law enforcement enhanced benefit thing, may see some rate creepage upwardly. We're not talking about a bridge benefit here. We're just saying that there are benefit components that sometimes can directly impact the rate. So, we just have to be honest and say there are situations in which there's a variability in the rates, and right now, our rate structure, believe it or not, is creeping downwardly. 2008 rate structures were creeping upwardly because we had a bubble in the real estate market. So, there's some variability. The employees' 5% never changes, your rate could theoretically have some variability. But what I've seen with those who've adopted this rate structure, the 2.3 hybrid plan, where employees paying 5% have seen downward pressure of the rates. I did one of these for a town two years ago, and their rate is already below 2%. So, so, I'm not saying it won't change the other direction, but I'm just saying in general, this is the most affordable, most stable plan within the state government, because even the state of Tennessee realized about 10 or 15 years ago that they needed to make some adjustments to the legacy plan to make the state's funding more stable. And then we made it available to local governments, and it has proven so.
Tim, what's, what, what interest rate are you guys paying now?
We went from, uh, our actuarial assumed return rate, it started at 7.5%, is now at 6.75%.
Which is still good.
Still better than the bank.
Sure is.
So, when we don't hit 6.75%, and now, we're in double digits right now, actually. When we don't hit 6.75, there's a creepage of rates theoretically. But when we exceed 6.75%, those tend to see the creep down. We smoothed this over a 10-year period, so we don't have spikes and valleys. So, when we, when things are going good, we try to rock and roll. When things are bad, we try to really try to better manage that. But we smooth it over a 10-year period, so there's no sudden changes in the rate. We like a smooth, stable rate. The purpose of me being here is to present you this resolution and to talk about it, because I think it's an important concept to get, but it's also not just, quote, retirement. It's really a recruiting and retention tool, and it also has some additional benefits, like I mentioned. The disability portion, if you become disabled and qualify for social security disability, I don't care if you're 40 years old, if you're vested and got a benefit and there's some, there's some criteria in there, you can draw your TCRS benefit as a disability benefit. That's a good thing. It's not good that you're disabled, but it's good that it's available. We also have a, uh, a, a death benefit to where if, if I don't make it home tonight, my wife, who's my beneficiary, and, and she's on the plan, would theoretically get the access to the benefit, and the benefit would be more than the benefit I would have drawn. So, there's a, it's not insurance, it's not like insurance, but it's a death benefit. So, fire police folks like this because they're sensitive to these kinds of issues. So, retirement, yes. Disability benefit, yes. Death benefit, yes. There's criteria in there, but yes. So, uh, you have the resolution before you. I'm here to answer questions. If you wanna adopt it tonight, that's wonderful, we can move forward. If you wanna digest, that's perfectly fine. I'm not selling anything, I don't make a nickel on any. What questions do you have here at the board?
I mean, I think we need to do it.
Yeah. So, so, in my analogy, I, I'm not gonna say you're gonna save money, because that's a kind of a nebulous thing, but you're simply transferring assets that you're currently spending on matching program and putting it into TCRS for those who choose to participate. But are you not giving employees a better benefit than they would've gotten in the? Whatever money they have in this 457 is theirs, based on how your vesting structure works. It could be 100% vested right off the bat, it's still, they don't have to give that up, it's their money. They just begin anew if they choose to participate in TCRS with us, and then we can, once adopted, passes our board, we can start accumulating service in TCRS. And whether it's somebody from the prison coming here, or somebody here going to the DOT, they can continue with it. But, uh, what you're gonna see is, uh, uh, once people get vested, it's hard for them to leave.
I'm, I'm going on my retirement through TCRS right now, and it's pretty good retirement. We'll go 42 years.
Yes, sir. Is, is this the, is that the retirement that we was talking about last time, that the police offered?
Yes.
Okay. I just wait, I just had never heard of it.
And, I mean, y'all are welcome to, if you decide you want to swap, we, we can swap you over.
Yeah, it sounds pretty good.
Have you got a copy of that resolution, and I, I can read it, and then they can?
I sent it through your email, I do not have it with me.
Okay. It's a good.
Yeah, that's why, I just, I just had never heard of it, so I was hoping to stick with it, although I know, well, it sounds pretty good.
Do you have the list of benefits that come with it?
Yes, you have the options.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, I have some things, uh, I don't know if I have it with me right now. But treasury.tian.gov is where the state treasurer's website is, and it has more. If you, if you've gotten in some, in the middle of the night, and you wanna get some sleep, open up that website and look at everything, it's there, and after a bit of time, there'll be more, and, and. I'm happy to have fun, but, uh, it, it's definitely on the website.
Okay. Um, what I can do, we have to have a call meeting in two weeks to do the secondary reading on the budget, so I can make sure I'll be getting y'all another packet before that meeting with your updated budget and all of that in there, so I can make sure that resolution's printed off. That only has to be read once, and we can pass it that night as well, that way we can start it up first of July and get everybody enrolled. In fact, it's a great.
So, timing is important. It has to pass our board as well, and that's a routine process. So, we're really looking at August.
Okay.
For the third quarter.
Okay.
So, uh, and what that means is, uh, you may have to do a budget amendment to document what you're doing. It should be a routine, you know, it's, it's, uh, it's gonna take probably 30 days for you to communicate with employees. I would suggest you give them a, a, a form to fill out, yes, I choose to participate, no, I do not choose to, which is fine. But, uh, what we see sometimes is an employee says, uh, how come I'm not in TCRS? I wanna do that. Well, your form says you said no. But you can, starting today, we can get you in. So, it's, it's just helpful for documentation purposes to have a little form to say, yes, I choose to participate, or no, I don't. And then, uh, we can immediately get them in payroll and, uh, get, get them contributed. Uh, once you're in, you're in, if you choose not to participate, you can always come back in. But once you're in, you're in, you're in.
But they can't, if we adopt this, they can't be in both retirement systems, correct?
Now, that's up to you, you could, but places that do this, I've done this in a dozen different places, places that do this offer the 457 for those who don't want TCRS, and for those that do, they end the match and, and do TCRS, and then the employee can voluntarily put money into the 457. Most do not, they, they, they take the TCRS. But that's a policy matter, but the, the, so, we would talk to the recorder about setting up a, within employee handbook, a, a, a policy statement about that. But the assumption in this discussion is that you wouldn't be paying for both.
Okay.
Right.
Okay, I make a motion that we adopt the TCRS retirement system with the, uh, motion also saying that they, we, they can't be in both one at the same time and expect the city to match both.
Well, I, I, I think.
We have to have a resolution and pass a resolution.
We have to do the resolution, yeah.
So, we can do it in a, in a.
We'll do it the next week in two weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I think the board is pretty informed on what they wanna do. If you want me to come back and tell some more stories, I'd be glad to tell some more stories. But, uh, otherwise, I won't be here, I mean, I'll, I'll come if you want me to. My, my rule is if you invite me, I'll show up, if you don't invite me, I ain't showing up.
Straightforward.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim, appreciate Tim for.
Very well.
Appreciate it.
You know as well as I do, anybody wants to try to get a job or a thing, say, uh, they entertain a thought, that's benefits. And that might entice someone, hey, look what Ridgely, see the Ridge is offering. And, and the guys that are already here, and girls here, uh, give them a little incentive to stay, build up their, their retirement.
We do have a couple of employees that have considered leaving because they don't offer it.
I, I, I get that, I get that. I quit chopping cotton because they didn't have no benefits.
All right, fiscal year 24, 25 budget amendments.
Okay. Um, first off, we have to do this first, I'll, I'm just gonna kind of give y'all, a lot of you a move. We have to pass the budget amendments first, these are items that, as the year went on, your budget is basically a guess. You're saying, I think we're gonna spend this amount of money on this, and there's been things, we've had some issues at City Hall, and we've had to work on central units and put in heat, and work on the roof, and work on the roof here, and different things. So, your budget sometimes fluctuates out of that little comfort zone that you've put it in. And so, these amendments are basically saying, we went over on this, but we're gonna take money from this, and we're gonna apply it to this, so that we can balance the budget back out. And then after we do that, we will read the budget, and Ms. Renee will be very happy to know that we do not have to read all 27 pages, which we did, when we did last year.
Even Mike was glad of that.
I did, I did, I did clarify that within pass to make sure. That was prominent me at that meeting, and I was like, okay, now I guess we're gonna read 27 pages. We do not have to do that tonight, we just have to read the first few pages, which is the actual publication that will go in the newspaper. We will read it tonight, y'all can discuss it, and then we'll take a, we'll do a vote. And if it passes on the first reading tonight, we will schedule a meeting for either Thursday or Friday, two weeks from this week, because it'll run in the paper next Wednesday and the following Wednesday. And then either that Thursday or Friday, we'll have a call meeting, and we will do the TCRS, we'll do the budget amendments, the second reading, and the second reading of the budget, which we don't have to read it again, we just, we can wait for reading. And then once it's passed, I have to just inform the comptroller that it has been passed by the 30th of June, and then I've got 15 days to get it to the state. And my finance consultant has helped me with this, because Ridgely has never been recognized for having their budget heard in on time and correctly. And that's our goal, is to get a certificate this year. So, that's the plan. So, the first thing I'm gonna do is, I'm just gonna kind of, I'm gonna read the first few pages of this amendment on the amend, on the, the ordinance on the amendments, and kind of highlight some things that we're having to go through and change. And then we'll take a vote on that, and then we'll do the budget the same way. Y'all ready for some hear my voice throw lights? Okay. Ordnance number 061225A, in accordance with the city or town of Ridgely, Tennessee, amending the fiscal year 2025 budget. Whereas the governing body adopted the fiscal year 2024 budget by ordinance number 06, or 2025 budget, I'm sorry, by ordinance 062124 on June 21, 2024. And the budget was submitted to the Tennessee Comptroller's Division of Local Government Finance for approval. And pursuant to the Tennessee Code annotated 91-116, availability of programs and services to people in this state shall be limited to the extent that funds are appropriated by the General Assembly or the appropriate governing body of a political subdivision, and the governing body needs to amend the budget to allow for increased or decreased revenues and/or expenditures. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the governing body that it hereby adopts the following changes to the fiscal year 2025 budget. On the next page, general fund, which is financial administration first. There are changes, um, in salaries, building repairs, the dog pound expense, because we had some repairs that had to be done out there, insurance expenses that were a little higher than what we originally estimated them to be, and then a decrease in the capital out, uh, capital outlay budgeted amount. City beautification is a little bit higher, and then the civic center, of course, we've had to do some repairs to the building, so that budget, we did go a little budget over there, and removing $15,200 from the fund balance to cover those differences. Then when you go down to the police, you'll see that the salaries on the police department is over budget by $42,000, but that's because we were, we had a very, very small budget for it, it was changed. It was well over $200,000 several years ago, and for the past four or five years, that budget dwindled, dwindled down, under $200,000. And not having full coverage, of course, you've got officers that have had to work a lot of overtime. But we have a full crew now, and we're hoping next year that we'll be able to stay within the budgetary restrictions that we have in place. The disbarter fee was increased after the budget was passed last year, so that was an expense that we weren't aware of, of $5,000. Health insurance was a little bit lower, your operating supplies were a little over $10,000. But if you look at these line items, the operating supplies, the capital outlay, that's the $45,000 that we got with the VCR. the forty-five thousand dollars that we got with the V C I S grant. So even though it's showing that it's over budget, it's also revenue that we weren't anticipating because it was grant proceeds that we received after the budget was done.
Got you.
Okay. And that would be taken, it's taken fifty-eight thousand dollars of the fund balance, which the actual grant revenue goes into general fund and then you transfer it into the police department. And that's why that vote's supposed to be swapped over. And then if you go down to the fire department, again, the insurance fees were a little higher this year than what we actually had budgeted. So it's up five thousand dollars. You'll see thirty-four thousand dollars on capital outlay. We did get on this budget, we got the fire department grant last year that was seventy-four thousand dollars. And then we got one this year that was a little over thirty thousand. But we had only budgeted for the seventy thousand dollar grant because we weren't aware that we were going to be able, we didn't know for sure if they would open that program back up, which we did and we were able to get that. So that's why that's higher. And then you'll see the grant proceeds reduced by the same amount that will be transferred over to the fire department to cover that. And five thousand out of the fund balance to cover the difference in the insurance. Street department, it's over on salaries and the taxes and health insurance and all of that because when Daryl was made supervisor, we swapped him over, paying him out of the street department instead of paying him out of water. So there's a difference there. And then operating supplies, of course, again, they've had some expenses. We got the garbage truck fixed. I think they've got some mowers now that are in the shop. Just expenses that we weren't expecting. The capital outlay of the sixty-eight thousand dollars, that's where we bought the truck and the trailer. And of course, we did get the grant funds on that as well. So where you'll see right underneath that, the fifty-five thousand five hundred is where the grant proceeds will be transferred to take care of that overage. Then when you go down into state street aid, that's basically, we get money from the state. We get electric bills. And that's all that's paid out of that account. It's just those electric bills for the street lights and the meter that proposed, that calculates that. So it was a fifteen hundred difference. So we will have to put, reduce the fund balance by that fifteen hundred dollars to cover that. Sanitation, same thing, because the rates weren't raised for so many years. And the contract has a two point five percent clause in there where it increases every year. And then, like I said, I discovered the difference in the housing rates from what everyone else was paying. That's all been corrected. So seventeen thousand dollars from the fund balance will be transferred into that. However, if you look at the budget, solid waste, once we do the increase and all of that is put into place, solid waste should finish next year, forty-two thousand to the good. So we can start building that fund back up. And then our contract with Republicans next year, and that's when we can start looking at, do we use the garbage truck? Do we do it ourselves? Or do we go back into a contract again? Water and sewer, no amendment was necessary. Everything in water and sewer was taken from their budget. So we're good there. We don't have to do anything on water and sewer. Cemetery, the contractual services was a little bit high. So we only have to do a thousand dollars there to transfer that in to take care of that. And then the police department, the drug fund, of course, there's no amendment there as well. And we will be adding, we did have to open a counter up for that seized money from the drug bust, the twelve thousand dollars. It's in a separate account. There is a line item on your trial balance that says unawarded seized funds. That money will stay there until it's awarded to us by the state. And that will transfer into the police department's budget as well.
Into the drug fund.
Oh, into the drug fund. I'm sorry. And then the back page just says, now therefore, be it resolved, the official is shall take effect immediately upon final passage.
That's twelve thousand. Is it in a savings account?
It's a separate account. It's a checking account.
Interest bearing or anything?
No. The bank here doesn't do any type of escrow accounts or anything like that anymore. So we just went ahead and put it in there. But the way that she set it up, there is a difference.
Okay.
The way impasse wanted to do it is anytime we seize money for it to go into escrow where we can. That way, if that money goes back to that person, any interest that it gained, it keeps.
Yeah, that's what I was, what I was, that's why I was inquiring. I didn't know whether that might have been some kind of little interest bearing account.
We didn't have that option.
That's fine. That's fine.
The same bill is on the act.
Yes, sir.
But it can't go into a money market or go somewhere.
The drug fund money?
Yeah.
So it has to be set, the way he coordinated with him passed, I coordinated with my finance people with him passed, and the way that it's set up, it's not our money right now. We're just holding it. So it has to be.
So I mean, after he, after returned to the police department.
That's what he, it was on his drug fund. And it would be used for.
Spending.
Spending things to increase the drug.
He can still operate out of the money market and watch the money market from interest.
No. Impasse, it's only allowed to go into your drug fund. The day that we get the letter that it's awarded us, it has to be removed from the bank into the district.
Really?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Are you, have a question?
We were both new at this. We took a lot of the other people to make sure we were going to correct.
That drug, that drug fund can only be used for anything that.
Buy drugs with the drug money.
Right.
Testing kids.
Which is great.
All right. Do we have a motion to amend amendments to the budget?
Make a motion to amend.
Yes, I second. Motion by Steve, second by Bruce.
Michael.
Yes.
Denise.
Yes.
Yes.
I want to commend Beth on what, you know, because she sounded like she's on top of her game there. And especially looking at the deficits or whatever in the hole. And she explained it, explained it where this money went and what her game plan is to recoup that and everything.
Transparency is.
That's, I mean, that's it. And I appreciate you, because, you know, I've come up with ice water or some of this stuff.
That's what I said. A lot of y'all have never had.
Yeah, this is my first rodeo, but I still, hey, I just want to meet you on a good job, girl.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
I say when you were.
Yeah.
All right, moving on.
First reading of the twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Y'all read the pizza and the sleeping bags?
She's going to touch some highlights before we're not reading twenty-seven.
No, no. I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to go past the ordinance real quick and just show you some things on the budget that I changed this week called Shane. I sat down with Jason. I sat down with Donnie. I sat down with Daryl. And we went through their budgets. And I showed them, I kind of taught them how to, nobody's ever showed them how to read budgets. So I sat them down. I showed them kind of the high points, what they were, what they could expect, how we came up with the salary figures and all of that. And so there are some changes on here that were made after y'all got the original draft. I'm going to touch those. And we'll read the ordinance and we'll be done. If you'll go to page six at the top, the adware and taxes, that number was originally pulled off of our state and the revenue monthly reports, the thirty-two thousand dollars. I did amend that because I got to looking at that. And we've got a big, we've got a big one that's almost twelve thousand dollars in contractors, which is a motor carrier that pays these taxes to us, went and received it. And so I started digging. I got on the internet, found they had moved locations. I was mailing it to Texas. They notified the state after the adware bills went out, that they had moved, but nobody notified me. So I was mailing them to Texas. So they didn't have to pay it. I talked to her today. She's overnighting us a check. I told her I needed to get it in before this budget was over so that our budget would be correct. So I did change that number to thirty-two thousand to make up for the differences in that money and also in cases of increase, increases, because that does go up each year a little bit. And then if you'll go down to middle of the page, you'll see ten thousand dollars where the police department is getting a governor's highway safety grant. So when Jason and I sat down, we were discussing his grant. He told me about that. So I put that in there. And then if you'll go over to page seven at the bottom, there's a forty thousand dollar capital outlay put in there. That's going to be for the software upgrade. Because that will be paid on July the first. And I had to put that money in there. Having said that, if you look at the general fund, the general fund is actually going to lose money this year because that money was COVID money that's been sitting there earmarked for this computer software. So each month, when I give you a trial balance for general fund, that fifty-five thousand dollars is sitting there. So when I take that forty out to pay for the software, our fund balance is automatically going to drop by that because we're not actually using the revenue, the yearly revenue that comes in just operates the city for the year.
How much of the COVID money we have, Beth?
I'm sorry?
How much of the COVID money we have?
Fifty-five thousand dollars in general fund and two hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in water.
That's all that's left?
Two sixty-three in water. And that money is set aside for, we just got a bill, we got a deposit the other day of eighty thousand dollars on the water plant rehab projects and all that. They sent us a check for seventy-seven thousand dollars. I have to add a check for eight thousand dollars to pay the bills. So, and that's, that money in water, the COVID money will be used as they send me invoices for that project. That money will, that will also be reduced by that amount.
And so when does that expire, that COVID?
COVID money, now we've done paperwork. The way that, the way the gentleman that helped me do the reporting that has to be done on that, he, basically what we did is we used the COVID money to pay salaries. We took money over here and we've put what we would have used our, the city's money to pay salaries and put it in these funds. And that's what's been held. So the state has, has information that we have, the money's been spent, but it's still just been sitting there all this time. So we don't really have to report all that to them. But it's just, what we did is we paid payroll out of it. And that's the way that we reported it, is that payroll was kept up during that time. And then the money that would have went to payroll went into these funds that were held as COVID money. That way I don't have to report every invoice that we pay as this stuff comes up, like you would have to turn all of that into the state.
So there won't be any more COVID money, right?
No, after this, now after this, this fifty-five is gone. When we paid the software, well, about fifteen thousand left in general fund. But now we're looking at, we've got a grant, a USDA grant that we've applied for to buy an asphalt roller. So we'll have a match on that. And then we've got a couple other things. I don't know if y'all are aware, but I applied for a grant for four hundred thousand dollars to completely renovate this building. That one is no match, but we've got some other stuff coming up that we will have matches on that will have to be matched out of that COVID money until it's gone. And then the water, the same thing. That project is like one point nine million dollars. Our match on it is ten percent. So a hundred and ninety thousand of that two sixty-three will be used as that match. I think the rest of it, we talked about using it for the meter program. So, okay. So that forty thousand, that's why that changed because I had to put the software purchase in there. And then if you go to page eight, we did some adjustment on the, Jason and I were talking about salaries. We got them back up where they were supposedly about five years ago. And he, we went through and reduced some of the expenses because he did get that forty thousand dollar grant. We were able to drop operating supplies, uniforms, things like that because they got what they need. And they're not going to have to buy a whole lot this year. So where there was one number in there for salaries, we decreased some of this stuff to increase salaries so we can make sure that there's money in there to cover them for overtime or whatever.
How much of a salary increase across the board did we give everybody?
Five percent.
Five percent. Everybody got five percent.
And it also includes, this is something Shane and I talked about, and I want to be transparent with y'all. You know, they've done these food right gift cards every year for Christmas. And they upped it to two hundred dollars last year. And the aldermen and the employees and, and people that were on different boards and the lady that cleans city, everybody got the same amount, two hundred dollar gift card. And what I'm proposing is to go back to a hundred dollars on the gift cards for ancillary and each full-time employee. It's, it's in the budget to give each full-time employee a five hundred dollar Christmas bonus instead of doing those gift cards. Because, I mean, times are hard and things are expensive. And we've got people that have been here a long time. One thing that we were looking at is, is how water has increased and the money that, you know, I'm able to move some salaries around into water that we were paying out of other funds to make sure those funds are healthy. So we would still do the gift cards, the ancillary at a hundred, and then each employee would get a bonus.
Do we have a date, like a hire date? If you were hired past this date, you're not getting it or?
Um, I think that would be something that we would need to look at. It's like maybe at least as long as their ninety days are up or six months. I mean, something, because it'll, you'll, you would get it the week of Thanksgiving. Like you would get it.
I just threw it out there because you don't want somebody hiring.
Start in November the first, and you get a five hundred dollar.
I'd say six months.
Well, I'd say at least their ninety days.
And you can do it like where I used to work. If you've been there so long, you get the full amount. If you've been there less than that amount, you get half. So that everybody gets a little, or you can even do just a hundred dollars if they don't have their ninety days. But that's something we can look at later in the year. And as we're doing longevity and all that, we can come up to numbers and get it passed later, like in the fall.
And if that employee leaves during that year, they left, they shouldn't get anything. They left.
No, no. This will be strictly full-time employees who are currently on the payroll in the Thanksgiving.
My previous employment, if, if you were there less than six months, then you get half of it. If you're there six months longer, you get a full.
I'm hoping by that time, we don't have hurt, maybe one or two employees that haven't been here six months because we got to be people. Okay. I think there was only one thing in water that I wanted to touch on, and that's also the salary. I had to put money in there because Donnie's getting ready, I want to schedule this test for her. But she's got another test to take. If that test is passed, he gets raised. So I wanted to put some funds in there to make sure that raise was covered. And also, they do get some overtime here and there if they get called out for a leak. Daryl gets called out to cut trees, you know, in the, in the road or whatever. I wanted to factor in some money to make sure we weren't going over budget. A very conservative amount, a conservative amount, but to make sure that that was covered. And like I said, water's going to end again next year. If the projections come like they should, there're going to be another couple hundred thousand dollars to the good on revenues instead of losing money, which has been the case up until last year. And this year is the first time they've made money. And that, I think, they need a round of applause because that's leaks it. Now I'm going to go back and read through the ordinance and.
That said a tax rate of one thirty-nine oh six?
Sir?
Tax rate one thirty-nine.
One point three nine oh six.
One what?
One point three nine oh six.
Yeah.
Not touching there.
Okay. Yeah. An ordinance at the town of Ridgely, Tennessee, adopting annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty-five, and ending June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Tennessee code annotated nine dash one dash one sixteen requires that all funds of the state of Tennessee and its political subdivisions shall first be appropriated before being extended, and that only funds that are available shall be appropriated. And the municipal budget law of nineteen eighty-two requires that the governing body of each municipality adopt and operate under annual budget ordinance presenting a financial plan with at least the information required by the state statutes. That no municipality makes any money regardless of the source except in accordance with the budget ordinance. And the governing body shall not make any appropriation and excessively made into available funds. And the governing body has published annual operating budget and budgetary comparisons of the proposed budget with the prior year and the current year in a newspaper or journal circulation, not less than ten days prior to the meeting where the board will consider final passage of the budget. Now therefore, be it ordained by the board of mayor and alderman of the town of Ridgely, Tennessee, as follows. That the governing body estimates anticipated revenues and appropriations of the municipality from all sources to be as follows for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six. General fund, total cash receipts, eight hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty appropriations, nine hundred thirty-one dollars, five hundred and sixty-three. That's the forty thousand dollars for the software. So it's going to, it is going to reduce that. Beginning fund balance is a thousand four eighty-six, ending fund balance nine seventy-five oh three. The drug fund will begin and end the year at seventeen hundred and one dollars unless that money is awarded. And then we would have to go to the budget amendment at that time to put that in there. It cannot be in the budget until it's awarded to the city. The cemetery, cash receipts of fifty thousand dollars, fifty thousand four hundred dollars. Total appropriations of forty-eight thousand fifty dollars. Difference in the cash receipts and appropriations is a positive two thousand three hundred fifty dollars. Solid waste charges for services, two hundred sixty-six thousand dollars. Total appropriations of two hundred twenty-three thousand forty-nine dollars. And that difference is a positive forty-two thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars. Water and sewer, operating revenues and other contributions totaling two million eight hundred fifty-one thousand six hundred dollars. Total appropriations of seven hundred fifty-two thousand one hundred sixty-one dollars. Change in net position is two thousand ninety-nine four hundred and thirty-nine dollars. There will also be some expenditures that are not on there because of the grant and as they were pending on funds that they bid on car projects, the bids were all over budget. So they're trying to get some lower bids. And that will change as the year goes on. But we will have to amend the budget at that time. Section two, at the end of the current fiscal year, the governing body estimates fund balances as follows. General. Section two, at the end of the current fiscal year, the governing body estimates fund balances as follows. General fund, one million four thousand eighty six dollars. Drug control, one thousand seven hundred one dollars. Cemetery, two hundred ninety nine thousand three hundred forty seven dollars. Solid waste, one hundred seventy thousand five hundred forty dollars. Water and sewer, four million nine hundred eighty seven thousand three hundred fifty two dollars. And then we have debt in the amount of three hundred eighty six thousand four hundred sixty two, which is a water project we pay on each month. Um, pending capital projects, we don't have anything listed this time because we don't have anything that's that will, that will, I will be putting the asphalt roller in there and I think that's all that will go on, on that column. And then the proposed capital projects is the water and sewer project at one point nine million dollars. No appropriation listed above may be exceeded without an amendment of the budget ordinance as required by the municipal budget law of nineteen eighty two. In addition, no appropriation may be made in excess of available funds except to provide for an actual emergency threatening health property or lives of the inhabitants of the municipality and declared by a two-thirds vote of at least a quorum of the governing body in accordance with Tennessee Code annotated six fifty six two oh five. Money may be transferred from one appropriation to another in the same fund in an amount of up to one thousand dollars by the mayor subject to such limitations and procedures as set by the governing body pursuant to Tennessee Code annotated six dash fifty six dash two oh nine. Any resulting transfers shall be reported to the governing body at its next regular meeting and entered into the minutes. A detailed financial plan will be attached to the budget and become part of this budget ordinance. There is hereby levied a property tax of one point three nine oh six for one hundred dollars of assessed value on all real and personal property. The annual operating and capital budget ordinance and supporting documents shall be submitted to the comptroller of the treasury or comptrollers designate need for approval at the town, city, as debt issued pursuant to Title Nine, Chapter twenty one. Tennessee Code annotated approved by the comptroller of the treasury or comptrollers designate need within fifteen days of its adoption. If the comptroller of the treasury or comptrollers designate need determines that the budget does not comply with the statutes, the governing body shall adjust its estimates or make additional tax levies sufficient to comply with state statutes or as directed by the comptroller of the treasury or comptrollers designate need. All unencumbered balances and appropriations remaining at the end of the fiscal year lapse and revert to the respective fund balances. All ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict with any provisions of this ordinance are hereby repealed. If any section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance is held to be invalid or unconstitutional by any court, unconstitutional by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holdings shall not affect any other section, clause, provision, or portion of this ordinance. If for any reason, a budget ordinance is not adopted prior to the beginning of the next fiscal year, the appropriations in this budget ordinance shall become the appropriations for the next fiscal year until the adoption of the new budget ordinance in accordance with the section six dash fifty six dash two ten Tennessee Code annotated, provided sufficient revenues are being collected to support the continuing appropriations. This ordinance shall take effect July first, twenty twenty five, the public welfare requiring it. No, that's it.
Good job.
All right, do we have a motion passed the first reading of the twenty five twenty six budget?
I'll second it.
Motion by Michael Ford, second by Renee.
Bruce?
Yes, ma'am.
Steve?
Yes.
Denise?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Okay, update on condemned or and unsightly property.
I gave you a list, um, the only one, the two thirty North Street is a vacant house that's in foreclosure that has been mowed. Um, they also have got a contract that they're gonna start mowing it every two weeks while they're, the house is destroyed. Uh, very badly, it's gonna have to be done probably completely. And she said that as long as the work is going on, the bank has it in their hands, they will make sure that it's mowed at least every two weeks. The other one, um, I had one of the condemnations, the one at one twelve lake requested an extension. I told her she would have to come to the board meeting to request that extension, but I didn't have the authority to give her that and, um, I was just told not to come, so. Those have up until they were mailed out on May thirtieth. They've got thirty days from that day to either provide documentation that they have addressed the issues, that they're in the process of addressing the issues or the building will then be labeled as condemned. No one will be allowed in them and we can move forward with getting them torn out.
All right, we'll move on. Appoint new members to the industrial board. Bruce, are you the only member?
Former member, yes. And you know, I was sitting here thinking about that very thing. You know, of course, uh, before I got this position, couldn't find enough people to have a called meeting. And that's, you know, that was maybe, I'm not kidding, maybe three meetings we had enough. And it was just people didn't want to take interest and it was disheartening, but your hands are tied. I couldn't even make a decision to, uh, you know, get something done to pay someone like the, you know, the Dollar Store building here, they still working on it. Especially number one, I can't authorize a, a check. I never did. There was two ladies. So, you know, that being said, yes, we need to have somebody, you know, a group that has, there again, kind of like the board, has the city's best interest at heart. And, you know, industrial board, you're talking industry, it's gonna be hard to get industry into town, but they're, you know, they could with the property that we have right here, you know, just make some, uh, make some improvements on it and uh, try to entertain the thought, you know, it's hard to find property to uh, bring any type, you know, it'd be, not industry, it may potentially be some small business, but uh, the, uh, the, uh, bank statement had been going to Denny's for a long time, up to about a year ago, I guess. I called and said, where's this bank statement going? She says it's going to Denny's house and Denny's hadn't been around here. Here's my thought, oh, no, 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 no. And so, I've, I've got the statements at the house. I don't even open them. The first couple I did, really, the only thing, it's where they are paying rent and it's a bank draft where it's being, uh, a payment being made on the building.
We owe on that building?
Last one I looked is, it was there again, I did because I'm not on the board, but I think it was a neighborhood. And this been several months ago, Renee, and I'm gonna say it's sixty something thousand dollars. You know, and there was a, a ten thousand dollar lien, you know, loan taken out on the potential boat factory to, for earnest money paid out to the property owner that that we lost, that we lost there, you know, and so that.
They come out of the family dollar?
Uh, yeah, come out of, yeah, out of the family, yeah.
Out of the industrial fund.
Oh, industrial, pay the industrial board.
Industrial board, Denny wrote us a check.
Yeah.
And we lost that.
Oh, yeah, you don't live there. Denny's raised, we didn't get the time.
I think, you know, well, that's, that's water under the bridge, no matter what I think.
We'll just shut us. How many members, how many members is?
It was gonna, it was five.
You gotta have five.
It was five. There's myself, there's Barbara Marfin, there's Nancy Crane, that's how long ago it's been. She was, she was Alderman, she got elected Alderman. That's how long ago it's been, uh, uh, Jackie Johnson.
Tony, Tony Stoneburner.
Tony wasn't on it.
No, Tony was on the.
Might have been at one time.
No, Tony was on the zoning.
Girl lives out there.
Glenda, Glenda, uh.
Steve, that's the zoning board.
Huh?
That's the zoning board.
Zoning board.
This girl lives out here beside, uh, Regina Rhodes works there at the prison.
Oh, oh.
Dawn Gifford.
Dawn, Dawn, Dawn Gifford, yeah, she was on it. She showed up one time.
Yeah, I don't think they could ever, ever even have enough there to.
Dawn, we couldn't have enough to have a called meeting to vote on anything or anything, you know, that's, and, uh, you know, running in there, he showed up one meeting. You know, it's just, you know, but anyway. Have entertained all thoughts of, you know, you know, it's it's not matter of just raising hand, albeit, you know, you gotta have, you gotta.
Have somebody interested.
Interested and not just one person. Yeah, cause he's, Stephen wanted to ask me. So, as the board, we need to be thinking to some people that at least don't think of five, think of, think of thirty five, then you might get five out of them.
I mean, would that be something we probably run a banner maybe as well?
Possible.
Put it on the Facebook page, so we need some bottom.
Citizens have to be, you know, of course.
Own property in Wiscley.
They have to live within the city.
Or live in Wiscley.
Go ahead, Bill.
You might, you might want to look in the ordinances, cause I'm just sticking in my mind that there might be something in the ordinance about how that's supposed to be put together. I could be wrong. I know the planning and zoning is in there. Running the blind line, I seen something about the industrial board there. You may still want to look at your ordinances before you put something in, pick it up. That's all.
I got a note, I'll pull it and I'll email it to you as first with ordinance states, if y'all want those pamphlets maybe the July meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And not give us a month to have some people, you know, entertain thought, suggestion. Yeah, I, I was thinking about one already. Sitting here, but anyway, uh, yeah, but I don't, you know, I have, like I said, I haven't opened the bank statements in several months, cause really, it's none of my business.
Well, we need to look at that, but what we need to look at is their leases coming up.
Yeah, this is the year of the lease, the lease of we renew.
So, we need to figure out if they're staying or.
Yeah.
I've seen old list that it's.
Michael, would you be interested?
Yeah, they got a new, they got a new manager.
She says they're.
Yeah, they're, they're on a lease. Do they close? They're gonna close.
Oh.
Yeah. And what, what the board should be trying to do is get them to renew the lease.
Right.
And what the board should be working on, but we don't have a board to work on it. So, we're losing.
I think they were shut down a couple days last week.
And they've had computer problems.
One or two days, very conditions.
Computer glitch somewhere or another with your credit card machine and all that.
Five something.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we'll move on.
If you'll go under, uh, family dollar closures, that they're on the list. She also come in, their lease was up December twenty twenty five.
Well, you know, I thought, you know, this, you know, I don't want to be Nancy negative, but when Dollar General came in and Ridge of Tennessee, it's hard to support two Dollar Stores on such a small community. It is.
So, let me ask you this, if they did close up in December, how's that note gonna get paid? Is it paid out of the general fund? What's it paid out of?
It'll have to be paid out of the.
Yep.
Until, until you rented it out to somebody.
I was supposed to say, that's the second thing that needs to be done, is trying to find somebody to come in, take it place.
Like a good building like this.
Ma'am?
Do you know how much the monthly note is on?
Well, if, if I'm not mistaken, they were paying a percentage of whatever their gross was.
At the end of the year, they got a one-time, the city or the industrial board got a one-time bonus at the end of the year, a percentage of their, uh, you know, their revenue. I was calling it a bonus, but then it was just a straight uh, rental lease mostly amount, which I can.
Y'all have to try to, if they do, if they get out in December, I mean, we have to sink a lot of money into that property to try to get it sold while we're stuck paying the monthly note on it or?
Well, I tell you what I will do.
If, if they close, it automatically goes to the city.
Which still owns all sixty thousand.
Yeah, the city, city owns the building.
What I will, you know, I can find out what is owed on it and I will, now, I will open up this last statement.
Do you know how much rent they're paying?
That's what I will look at, you know, and I will thank the board.
When this, their lease ran out, the building should have been paid for. But it was evidently set up that way, so I don't know.
Be a good place for a supermarket.
It would be a really good place for a grocery store.
That could be, be getting somebody to come in it.
Oh, yeah. I know one, bro.
We've got plenty of properties out there.
We're gonna talk about that in a sec. I've been talking to them. Oh, Chief Doug, you got any updates?
Oh, yeah. We got our reimbursement, fully reimbursed. Five certified workers.
Great.
Finally got a full crew.
Oh, and the one that we had living in Ripley.
Get some of her money back out of there. Go over and just buy a biscuit or whatever.
But you, Donnie?
Uh, so the lady, they call, what we come up with, the CD, uh, she says there's a, there's a grant that she's trying to get us. They will help, say somebody has a water leak for a month or something, has about a six hundred dollar bill. They will help pay, help the CD get their money, you know, out of, out of the leaks and stuff. And, uh, T L M called and they're trying, they're trying to work on some grants for more paving and to work on some of our own, like the sewer problem we got around the school and stuff like that. They're working towards getting us a lot of grants if, if we can get them.
Right, good deal.
What, what about the aeriator? Have y'all cleaned it yet?
No, but that's, that's in that, uh, that's in the contract.
In the package.
The what?
That's in the.
When they come redo the water plant?
That's in it. For them to open it up, clean it out. I didn't know that, that they come with that when they come.
When did it get in the contract?
It's in the same contract that when they come refurbishing.
Been cleaned out in three years. What's, what's your pH level?
It's still six eighty eight, six eighty eight today.
Pretty high?
Yeah.
We gotta get this thing cleaned up. If you don't, everybody's gonna have rust and then we're gonna start getting calls about rusty clothes and rusty water. It's got to be cleaned over two years. Every two years. If you don't, it's gonna mess your water plant up. That's what takes the rust out of your water.
Yeah, I didn't know it was even in, in the contract. We were just, we're trying to do it ourselves.
Well, we usually do do it ourselves.
When they come, when they come looking at bits themselves, they come, it's in contract.
We need to have them come and do it then.
Well, I mean, whoever, whoever does the work, that's, they're, they're trying to open it up, clean it up.
We probably need customers, cause it takes like two, three days cleaning.
Yeah, and it probably needs to, probably needs to.
Probably already busted the mold, the motor up and top of it, I thought it has to be replaced. That's about two thousand dollars.
I haven't seen any damage to it.
Now, you won't see it unless you open it, unless you open it up and take that module out, I think, and you'll see which flows up and busting.
All right, what about you, Daryl? How's things going?
They're going good.
We do. We have taken the two old Husker mowers over to Paul's small engines. The worst one that is working on, it's gonna cost fifteen hundred to fix it. The other one, which should not cost that much, but it was better than trashing, or trashing the one.
I know one of them had a seat gun.
It was raised up. No, it was raised up.
No, it wasn't even on it.
Don?
It wasn't on it.
It was on the flipper, down over the rollboard.
Okay, well, I'm not even gonna argue about that. I mean, the, the boy said the seat was on there, cause we're gonna get them fixed and be able to use them. Uh, instead of them not being, you know, I think they were trying to just do away with one, weren't they? Just gonna junk it out, cause they said it wouldn't run or whatever.
Yeah, they wouldn't got to look at it, said the motor wasn't no good, but we finished it after three or four months, the moment it was, after it took it back.
Got you. You should see in your pack, packet, I printed off Ricky Patel's stuff. I have contacted Mr. Ricky about downtown property. Uh, asking him would he, first off, I asked would he go to a grocery store back? He said that, no, he said he wasn't wasn't going, you know, wasn't entertaining that at the time. So, I said, what about if you sell us your downtown property, which like Bill said, he's got this strip right behind the Dollar Store and he got a little block on the east side of it as well. How he come up with that, I have no clue.
That block on the other side, I talked to him.
We own, we own two blocks right across in front of us here.
I understand that, but I'm trying, I mean, my thing is, I think the city needs to own all downtown property.
For what?
Because you, you can control it and make it look better. I mean, we got, you know, we can't make these people paint their buildings or. anything like that, so when we had to walk, walk in all it, you know, they were talking about building something over here and, and, you know, different things that we got, trying to branch the stuff back to downtown as much as possible. But he's got, like I say, those two blocks there, then he's got three blocks right beside the, uh, where the old store used to be and old floors used to be. And also he's got a block behind that as well.
It's on the other side of the alley. He has a tall piece joining what the city owns.
That's right. I mean, it's like, I don't know how many acres it is or how many, I'd have to figure it all up. But I asked him, I said, what about donating it to the city and, you know, would put their family name or something on it? And he said that, he said, just look at everything and kind of get a price together and he'd work with us and, and try to make it right, so.
I talked to him at one point about the little piece of property on the other side of the Dollar Store. It, it is about about twenty foot by thirty foot or whatever, but the air, the air conditioning units from the Dollar Store actually sitting on his property.
Right. But in total appraisal value, all his property down here is twenty one thousand nine hundred dollars. So I mean, if they would, if they donate it.
What kind of taxes he's paying on that?
Oh.
Six dollars on the one.
Not much.
Like nothing.
Yeah, so that's what I was trying to look at, and I know mayor's brought up something about, yes, there are, there's a, on the other flip side of this coin, there are some pieces of property that the city owns that we can't do anything with. What we're saying about possibly, is you won't care, you won't take off of this about the, given the land now joining.
You talking about like residential property? Yeah, the city doesn't, in my opinion, need to own any residential property. It needs to be sold if the adjacent landowner, it needs to be proposed and they could buy it. And then we, you know, if they didn't want to do it, then we'd do something else, but that, that part there, the residential stuff needs to be put back on property tax roll before somebody's paying property tax on it, cause the city's not. And I also was told that Jeff Murray and him have moved to the apartments.
That's been sold to someone.
I go, well, the one building said they sold it to the church. I don't know about the other, but.
Both of them out there.
Okay, so.
Both to the church?
I don't know, both, the church get both of them?
Yeah, that's what I was talking.
Okay, so we need to.
You know what you're saying about that?
Anything about living downtown?
Yeah, are we gonna do something bad? All right.
Yeah, well, we, you know, I talked to him, I went Jackie and everything, I thought he.
Well, well, Jackie was keeping it kind of quiet for now, yeah.
Hopefully in the, in a minute with the zoning board, we're gonna attack that, fix that.
All right, uh, anybody got anything else? Citizens, they put.
You were saying the church bought both those properties?
That's what Steve said. I know they bought one, but.
Well, if they bought them, then does, does it, is that still?
I, I was told, I was told they were going, I was, I was told they were gonna buy both of them.
You know what I'm sitting here thinking of?
Commercial property or does it go into something else, the church owns?
It's gonna, it's gonna be part of the church when they get through remodeling it.
But how's it taxed?
Huh?
How's it taxed?
How's it taxed? The church, the church owns a lot right next to it. They own all the way up to the building.
He's saying is it commercial?
What?
Taxed.
Taxed. It's taxed, uh, well, I think the last board changed it to, to, uh, residential or either changed it back to commercial. I'm not sure which one.
Well, I'm saying that the church buys it, then it's not taxed.
Correct.
It, it becomes something that's on end.
That's correct.
That's right, that's right.
Exactly, exactly. But at least they'll fix it up and it'll be nice.
It's not a residence. That's the, that's the box. It's not, it's not gonna be residential.
And I think, I think somebody's been fighting that, that problem for a couple of years now with that down there. But anyway, they're gonna fix it up real nice.
That's good. I'm, I'm on board.
Me too.
I'm gonna turn my house into a church, I don't want to pay no taxes.
Long, long as you the preacher.
I agree.
You gotta have fifteen, fifteen members.
I can do that, though.
All right, any, any other citizen need to discuss anything? I have a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. News, second by Steve, it's our holiday pleasure.
Thank you, folks. Thank you, everybody.